Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the July 11th City Council meeting. Welcome to everyone here and everyone at home. Our first item this evening, because this is the meeting that is closest to the Fourth of July, we will start our meeting with a Pledge of Allegiance and then the reading of the Declaration of Independence by the Lane County League of Women Voters. We appreciate them being here very much, and I'll introduce you after we say the pledge. So, right now, would you please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, in this world with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now, I'd like to ask the Lane County League of Women Voters if they would please come up to this podium there and share with us some of the Declaration of Independence. Thank you for being here.
In Congress, July 4, 1776, the unanimous declaration of the 13 United States of America. When in the course of human events it becomes necessary for one people to dissolve the political bands which have connected them with another, and to assume among the powers of the earth the separate and equal station to which the laws of nature and of nature's God entitle them, a decent respect to the opinions of mankind requires that they should declare the causes which impel them to the separation. We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness; that to secure those rights governments are instituted among men, deriving their just powers from the consent of the governed; that whenever any form of government becomes destructive of these ends, it is the right of the people to alter or to abolish it, and to institute new government, laying its foundation on such principles and organizing its powers in such form as to them shall seem most likely to affect their safety and happiness. Prudence indeed will dictate that governments long established should not be changed for light and transient causes, and accordingly all experience hath shown that mankind are more disposed to suffer while evils are sufferable than to right themselves by abolishing the forms to which they are accustomed. But when a long train of abuses and usurpations pursuing invariably the same object evinces a design to reduce them under absolute despotism, it is their right, it is their duty, to throw off such government and to provide new guards for their future security. Such has been the patient sufferance of these colonies, and such is now the necessity which constrains them to alter their former systems of government. The history of the present King of Great Britain is a history of repeated injuries and usurpations, all having in direct object the establishment of an absolute tyranny over these states. To prove this, let facts be submitted to a candid world.
He hath refused his assent to laws, the most wholesome and necessary for the public good. He has forbidden his governors to pass laws of immediate and pressing importance unless suspended in their operation till his assent should be obtained, and when so suspended, he has utterly neglected to attend to them. He has refused to pass other laws for the accommodation of large districts of people unless those people would relinquish the right of representation in the legislature, a right inestimable to them and formidable to tyrants only. He has called together legislative bodies at places unusual, uncomfortable, and distant from their depository of their public records, for the sole purpose of fatiguing them into compliance with his measures. He has dissolved representative houses repeatedly for imposing with manly firmness his invasions on the right of the people. He has refused for a long time, after such dissolutions, to cause others to be elected, whereby the legislative powers incapable of annihilation have returned to the people at large for their exercise. The state remaining in the meantime exposed to all the dangers of invasion from without and convulsions within. He has endeavored to prevent the population of these states, for that purpose obstructing the laws for naturalization of foreigners, refusing to pass others to encourage their immigrations hither, and raising the conditions of new appropriations of lands. He has obstructed the administration of justice by refusing his assent to laws for establishing judiciary powers. He has made judges dependent on his will alone for the tenure of their offices and the amount and payment of their salaries. He has erected a multitude of new offices and sent hitherto swarms of officers to harass our people and eat out their substance. He has kept among us in times of peace standing armies without the consent of our legislatures. He has affected to render the military independent of and superior to the civil power.
He has combined with others to subject us to a jurisdiction foreign to our Constitution and unacknowledged by our laws, giving his assent to their acts of pretended legislation; pro quartering large bodies of armed troops among us; for protecting them by a mock trial from punishment for any murders which they should commit on the inhabitants of these states; for cutting off our trade with all parts of the world; for imposing taxes on us without our consent; for depriving us in many cases of the benefits of trial by jury; for transporting us beyond seas to be tried for pretended offenses; for abolishing the free system of English laws in a neighboring province, establishing therein an arbitrary government and enlarging its boundaries so as to render it at once an example and fit instrument for introducing the same absolute rule into these colonies; for taking away our charters, abolishing our most valuable laws, and altering fundamentally the forms of our governments; for suspending our own legislatures and declaring themselves invested with power to legislate for us in all cases whatsoever. He has abdicated government here by declaring us out of his protection and waging war against us. He has plundered our seas, ravaged our coasts, burnt our towns, and destroyed the lives of our people. He is at this time transporting large armies of foreign mercenaries to complete the works of death, desolation, and tyranny, already begun with circumstances of cruelty and perfidy, scarcely periled in the most barbous ages, and totally unworthy the head of a civilized nation's. He has constrained our fellow citizens taken captive on the high seas to bear arms against their country, to become the executioners of their friends and brethren, or to fall themselves by their hands. He has excited domestic insurrections among us and has endeavored to bring on the inhabitants of our frontiers, the merciless Indian savages, whose known rule of warfare is an undistinguished destruction of all ages, sexes, and conditions.
In every stage of these oppressions, we have petitioned for redress in the most humble terms. Our repeated petitions have been answered only by repeated injury. A prince whose character is thus marked by every act which may define a tyrant is unfit to be the ruler of a free people. Nor have we been wanting in attentions to our British brethren. We have warned them from time to time of attempts by their legislature to extend an unwarrantable jurisdiction over us. We have reminded them of the circumstances of our immigration and settlement here. We have appealed to their native justice and magnanimity, and we have conjured them by the ties of our common kindred to disavow these usurpations, which would inevitably interrupt our connections and correspondence. They too have been deaf to the voice of justice and of constant divinity. We must therefore acquiesce in the necessity which denounces our separation and hold them, as we hold the rest of mankind, enemies in war and peace friends. We therefore, the representatives of the United States of America, in general Congress assembled, appealing to the supreme judge of the world for the rectitude of our intentions, do in the name and by authority of the good people of these colonies solemnly publish and declare that these united colonies are and of right ought to be free and independent states, that they are absolved from all allegiance to the British Crown, and that all political connection between them and the State of Great Britain is and ought to be totally dissolved, and that as free and independent states they have full power to levy war, conclude peace, contract alliances, establish commerce, and do all the other acts and things which independent states may of right do. And for the support of this declaration, with a firm reliance on the protection of divine providence, we mutually pledge to each other our lives, our fortunes, and our sacred honor.
Thank you all very, very much.[617.41][617.41](APPLAUSE). That reading is special to me and my family. We are direct descendants from Thomas Nelson, Jr., one of the signers of the Declaration of Independence, who served in the Virginia House of Burgess at the First Convention, was a delegate to the Congress, and actually helped fund the Revolutionary War, so very significant in my family. Thank you so much. With that, we're going to go on to the next item on our agenda, which is the public forum. The public forum is an opportunity for individuals to speak to the City Council on any city-related issues, except for those items which have already been heard by a hearings official or are on tonight's agenda as a public hearing. Each person will have three minutes to speak. When you come to the podium, please give your name, city of residence, and for Eugene residents, your ward if known. The timer and lights indicate the time you have to speak. A yellow light will come on when you have 15 seconds to complete your comments. The red light indicates the end of three minutes. I'm going to open the forum, and we have eight people signed up to speak tonight. The first is Kevin Prochou, followed by Mark Callahan. Kevin, thank you again very much.
Good evening. I'm Kevin Prochou, and I live at 1030 William Street in Eugene, Oregon. And I wasn't actually planning to come to the meeting tonight, let alone speak, but I kind of got the feeling that this was a historic moment to come and hear the pledge recited here in the Declaration. So, what would I speak about tonight? Off the cuff, I guess I would just like to say that I haven't, if I have to be honest, I haven't followed the pledge issue as closely as others have, but it's obvious that we're starting to look at speech issues here in this town, and that's been one of them. And then we have Jim Dupree over there on Royal Avenue with his Bush Body Count sign, and then Bob here from the sports car shop and his EMX signs and stuff. So, we're definitely being, this is getting in the public eye, we're taking a look at these issues and stuff like that, and so I just encourage the council and the city to look at these issues with care, as I know that you will. And just, I think we're making history. I think beyond what we're doing here tonight, we're making history, so let's make it a good one. I'd also like to take this time just to speak a little bit about the EMX issue and the call for a public vote. I'd like to encourage council to really strongly consider the idea of allowing the public to vote on the issue. It's a speech issue in its own way, if you think about it, giving the citizens the right to weigh in on such a controversial issue. And I think that it's also important to show that you trust the citizens of Eugene to make this choice. I know that we all have our own opinions as far as whether EMX in West Eugene is a good choice, and I've seen both sides of that issue. I understand that there's a lot of good and positive things that it could bring, and there's also some things that concern me, the costs and such like that. So, the public has the right, I think, to weigh in on this. And so I think that we could, you know, this whole lawsuit that's going on right now, we could just end that. We can just end that right now by you, the council, introducing that topic as a public vote as a topic, and just let us do it. Let's weigh in on it. That's all I have to say about that. Thanks.
Thank you. Mark Callahan is next, followed by Nick Erhause.
Good evening, members of the Eugene City Council. My name is Mark Callahan. I live 3621 Malon Avenue in Eugene. I'm a father, I'm an average American, and I love my country. I'm here tonight to speak about my concern about the dishonorable behavior of the liberal members of this city council have embarrassed our city over the last couple of weeks on a national level. I grew up here in Eugene in the 1980s and 90s. During that time, the city was proud and cherished the sense of inclusiveness and acceptance of all residents and all citizens of the city, no matter whether they were liberal or conservative, lived north of the river or south of the river, Republican or Democrat. Now it seems the liberal members of this city council that espouse their sense of actions and towards inclusiveness choose only to be inclusive if a person thinks like they do, only doing the bare minimum to give the appearance that they actually care, want to be inclusive of those that don't share the liberal mindset like they do, mandating that the Pledge of Allegiance can only be stated at only four city council meetings during the year. By doing this, by doing the bare minimum, will only get this council the bare minimum of loyalty and the bare minimum of honor in the minds of the citizens of Eugene. Is this really what my hometown is degraded and devolved to? In the coming weeks, as I cross this great nation in my run for President of the United States, I will most likely be asked about the non-inclusive behavior of the liberal members of this city council. How can I answer that I am proud to be from Eugene when the inclusiveness on this council only includes those that choose to embrace the liberal mindset, instead of also including those that choose to have a conservative mindset? In my absence, I guess, someone will have to use their three minutes of public comment time at the beginning of meetings, that is, to recite the Pledge of Allegiance at future city council meetings. That is, unless this city council chooses to further restrict freedom of speech. Thank you.
No, sorry. We allowed an exception for the League of Women Voters Declaration of Independence presentation, but we do not have clapping during our public forums because we want everyone to feel safe and respected. Nick Erhause is next, followed by Al Rogers, I think.
My name is Nick Erhause, and I live at 3058 Hawkins Street. I've been here since 1976, and some things pique my interest and other things don't, so this is one of them that does. Seems to me that signing the Pledge of Allegiance is both a right and a privilege, but I wouldn't compel anybody to do it, and I don't think anybody should be compelled. They have the right not to say it, but other people have the right to say it, but I don't think anybody has the right not to hear it. And that's why it should be, it takes, I timed it tonight, it's like between 10 and 15 seconds to say the Pledge of Allegiance, so that's not a lot of time, it's not a cost to the, I think if necessary, we can come here, each city council meeting, and do it on our three minutes. We are part of, we are a political entity as part of the United States of America, whether we like it or not. Now, I read in the paper about you fantasizing over this peace dividend that you hope to get somehow from the same nation that you're reluctant to say the Pledge of Allegiance to. So, seems a little hypocritical to me. It's only 31 words, and this is always, this is a divided city, but it's also part of, we've always been a divided country. Even during the Revolutionary War, a third of the people were for the Revolution, about a third wanted to stay with the British, and about a third didn't give a damn either way. That's just the way this country is. However, we had to vote to put the flag on the Butte, and it barely passed, but it did pass, and it doesn't fly just four times a year, it flies every day. So, worse comes to worse, the way we can settle things in Eugene is like the way we settle the income tax issue. You people all thought it would pass easily. Obviously, you don't understand the people in your wards, some of you do, some of you don't, and it basically lost two to one. So, why don't you just put this on the ballot and let the people decide? That'd be more like Eugene style. Thank you.
Al Rogers is next, followed by Diane Thurlo.
My name is Al Rogers. I'm an 86-year-old native of Eugene and part of the greatest generation. That's the only commercial I have, and I know you're pleased that I don't have a prepared statement. It's been a long time since I graduated from 101 Journalism at the U of O, and I'm not in a position anymore to write articles. The thing that disturbs me is the action taken by the council a few weeks ago. I just cannot understand the opposition to having the Pledge of Allegiance at each and every council meeting. Thirty-one words is what the Pledge of Allegiance contains. Last time I checked, it took me about 12 seconds. Perhaps the council members take more time than that fixing their coffee or their water. But the other thing that gets me is that the people that do recite it don't take time to understand the words within the Pledge of Allegiance. If doing so, I think they might very well change their position on the pledge at such council meetings. It may not be a good analogy, but we're advocating that the veterans be recognized by the general public, and believe me, people, that the person that thanks you for being a veteran feels good about it, and the veteran, him or herself, feels equally fine. And if we do this along these lines, combined with the Pledge of Allegiance, we could care less about these derogatory remarks that might be made. So I would hope that the council would take a favorable position on this at each council meeting. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Diane Thurlo is next, followed by Bob Macheroni.
Hello, my name is Diane Thurlo. I live at 217 Crest Drive. Counselor Mike Clark's request was to voluntarily say the pledge before each meeting. Who in their right mind would compare voluntarily saying the pledge to voluntarily reading the Communist Manifesto? Well, apparently Betty Taylor did. Who in their right mind thinks the pledge should only be said on our own private property? Well, apparently George Brown does. The truth is that many of our city councilors don't like what our country stands for. There are people who want to create a one-world order where no country has more than any other country, and that means there's a lot of destroying of the United States that needs to happen yet in order to suit them. These people have hijacked the word progressive and are using it to fulfill their dream by creating and raising taxes, destroying our educational system, destroying our moral values of family and commitment, and speaking the lie of supporting diversity when only their point of view is tolerated. What about the pledge could be divisive? Could it be a reference to our flag, our republic? The choice to believe in God if one chooses, that we are a separate nation and not a one-world order. These people sure are receiving a lot of quality from this nation they are reluctant to pledge allegiance to. Lastly, I want to point out that our mayor Kitty Piercy is affiliated with the organization Code Pink. That organization is an anti-Israel activist organization that sponsored the two flotillas attempting to break Israel's blockade into Gaza. That blockade is to allow Israel to search ships before they can enter Gaza, because otherwise these ships smuggle in weapons which get used against Israel. Code Pink works hand in hand with Bill Ayers and Bernadine Dohrn of the Weather Underground on these missions. People beware. Mayor Piercy and many others on our city council are enemies of the people. Please stand up, speak up, and defend the Pledge of Allegiance, the Constitution as it was written, the Bill of Rights, our flag, and the ideas and values that have made this nation great.
Bob Macheroni is next, followed by Eugene Dricks.
Hello, Bob Macheroni. I live at 1994 Brewer. Mike Clark's my councilman, and I have a business at Sixth and Lincoln, and Andrea Ortiz is my councilwoman. I'd like to say, I'm going to be a little off-topic here at the beginning, that I don't think 31 words, whether you say them or you don't say them, makes you a good citizen in this community. And so I respect everybody's right to either say them or not, and I do respect everybody's opinion that they gave tonight, but I'm not sure that not having an open mind on things is going to do anything more for this community than just do anything more for this community. So, you may say them or not say them, but I'm sure we're all citizens of the same country, and we all deserve the same respect, and that's all I have to say on that subject. Okay? The other thing is, you know, I started some of this public input thing probably over a year ago now. A couple of things I didn't expect to get during this was, I didn't expect to have, you know, my ability to have my free speech questioned with anonymous complaints. I also didn't really expect that the acting head of LTD would resort to a personal attack on me because of something I had to say. I am the public, I am a taxpayer, I'm just giving some input. I tried to give some facts, I tried to give some information. I was told that that was welcome, and that was actually what was looked for. If my input to LTD is not valid as a taxpayer and a citizen of this community, I'm wondering whose input is valid. So, I'm going to return to the message, and my message was that LTD could give free student passes to everybody because it would not reduce their costs for them not to. So, they have a $36 million budget this coming year to run the bus system. They lost somewhere around $50,000 a month, and for that $50,000 a month, they're willing to throw nearly 10% of their ridership off the bus. They're willing to drive past those students and leave them at the curb, and so I think that's wrong. That's basically what I am saying, is I think that's improper for a transit system that says they're progressive and that they have all these great programs. Omot predicted that there would be more service cuts if you pursued MX. That has come to light less than six months after LTD said they would have no more service cuts for six years. Thank you.
Thank you. Eugene Dricks is next, followed by James Burtis.
Oh, boy. Hi, my name is Dricks, and I live on High Street. I am a little bit late tonight, but it doesn't matter, because I'm here now, because I was sweeping up High Street. Why would you do that? Well, I don't know, I had my apron on, and it's sunny and nobody's parked there. Why do I wear an apron? Well, that's for another time. I was here two weeks ago ready to say a few words, and I had all these great notes and some beautiful platitudes, and I didn't get to speak, so I'm going to do two-week-old platitudes here, because then I don't have to bring it back again. I just love being in Eugene, I love being here, I love you all, you are my counciliers, I'm sorry. Yes, I did say counciliers, it's a term of respect, because it's endearing. Eventually, people realize that you all are just like us, there's no difference, except you volunteer and suit up and show up and do a lot of work to help our city run forward, and it's appreciated. A couple of weeks ago, the University of Oregon had its graduation. It was kind of cool. I lived near the University of Oregon, so I got to see an event that happens every year that most people aren't aware of. We have a thing called graduating molecules around there. It's pretty much a little parade set up where the graduate walks wearing their cap and gown they bought for a few hours. Behind them are their parents, and behind that are their grandparents. And when you see these little strings of life moving around, you realize each one took about 20 years to create. They had to go to all that school, they had to get accepted to the university, they had to pay for it, it's just a lot of doing. And then they're released free into the world we have now. Those graduating molecules, and that's big. Here in Eugene and at the University of Oregon, we are very close to Bedrock, which is a pretty amazing thing. Because of that, because we're the most solid cities in the nation, we're able to have nanotech at our university, which is studying little tiny pieces of molecules, and that's small. And see the planet, see how it's going. Summer has begun, it sure was great to see everyone go by on the Butte to Butte run. It's amazing, anyone makes it. If you all ever saw the end of the run, you don't have to run. If you all ever saw the end of the run, you don't have to run, you could pretty much walk. It gets real slow at the end. But my job is to cheer everyone on, and I really enjoy doing that. So thank you very much. And that was then, and, oop, better hurry up. All right, Dricks, get going. All right, here comes our future. It's coming on every moment, and it's going to be made up of new tools, new things we haven't thought of. Look where we are now. Isn't this amazing? Keep going. All right, we have new traditions, new talismans, new tools to help us with our future, and new toys. And I encourage everyone to rethink the obvious. Money is not necessarily the key to anything. Firestein Theater once said, "Everything you know is wrong, and it seems that way." But in the future, we will solve all of this. More is not always more. Better cut to the end. Here we go. Okay, democracy is not passive, volunteering is not obvious, ideas not yours are not wrong, and Dricks is not just for kids, he's just a fun part of Eugene. Thank you.
John Baptiste, James Baptiste, next, please.
Hi, my name is James Baptiste, California, LA area. I want to say I'm really proud to be here at your first official Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. You ought to be commended, except for one of you stood off to one side, not wishing to participate. Why, I don't know. You have to answer that for yourself and for whoever you represent. But the allegiance to this country, I think, is very important, and you all, most of you stood up and pledged allegiance. I'm in Ward Four. Thank you, Mr. Paul, for the first time to read it here. The other thing, this Pledge of Allegiance is really pledged for all of us to have, is it appears that you travel through people or you whatever states down here, downtown LA, you notice they have no allegiance to this country, they have no allegiance to the state, or they wouldn't do what they do, or they have no allegiance to this city. So I, you know, it leads us to support, and if you wish not to pledge, that's fine. But there's other avenues, and I really wish you would consider, Mr. Brown, this whole thing, not be pointing you out, but it's different.
I'm going to close the public forum, and thanks, Dricks, for your positive attitude and great heart, and thanks for cheering me on at the Butte to Butte. Appreciate it. All right. I'm going to move on to the next item on our agenda, which is the Consent Calendar. City Council President? I move to approve the items on the Consent Calendar.
Second?
Moved and seconded. I don't see anyone in the queue for discussion, so would you please, oops, Counselor Ortiz just queued in.
I'd like to just make a comment before we leave, ma'am.
Sure. All right, so we're going to vote on this. Please vote. Eight in favor, nine in opposition. It passes. Counselor Ortiz, you have something you want to say?
Yes, ma'am, I do. I really appreciate everybody coming out tonight, and I really like seeing our veterans in the, in our elders in the audience. I'm, I just want to share that my challenge is that I'm, that I believe in what I do here, and I believe that everybody who took the opportunity to choose to stand up for public office does so for the right thing, and I, and I just, I just hope people understand that we all come to this table with our, with the experiences that we had growing up, and that's what we bring to the table. And nobody, you know, we don't put out there what our personal philosophies are or our personal beliefs, or what churches we go to, or what, if we, if we praise a god or not. And so I would really hope that, and I understand the power of free speech, and I truly believe in it, and I truly believe in this country, or I wouldn't be here. I take an oath of office, I swear in a Bible under God, an oath to uphold the Oregon Constitution. So I just would encourage people, I understand that there's, that people are really challenged to our decisions, but I would hope that we could, people could be respectful of our choices, and I, and I don't, and I know that some people feel like this wasn't really the ultimate, but in my opinion, this was a step in a direction that was positive. And I am really proud that we were able to do the Pledge of Allegiance, and I really look forward to seeing other people, other organizations like League of Women Voters, Veterans of Foreign Wars, Vietnam Veteran Era, Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts, come and join us at these, at these events.
Thank you for that, and with that, I thank everybody for being here this evening, and I'll close the meeting. Thank you.